Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to call to order the West Covina City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 21st. We will start tonight with our invocation by Reverend Alexandra Conrad from St. Martha's Episcopal Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Mike Tuohy.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this vibrant community of West Covina where we live, work, and play. We thank you for the hard work of everyone on the city council, our mayor Steve Hurford, Mayor Pro Tem Michael Tuohy, and council members Karen Armbrust, Sherri Lane, and Shelley Sanderson, and everyone else in West Covina who does their part to make this a healthy, exciting community. As we gather tonight, give us all a sense of peace and help us to work together in a spirit of unity. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk, roll call.
Mayor, Chairman Hurford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Vice Chairman Tuohy.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
President.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Okay, we are in closed session, so do we have a report out? City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, the director of the city council convened for closed session for the items that were posted on the agenda with all five members being present. The following is my report. With respect to Conference of Labor Negotiators, the various employee groups, the city council received a briefing from the city's negotiators. There was no final action taken on any of those matters, and there's nothing to report. Item number two, which is Conference of Rural Property Negotiators, the city council and the redevelopment agency received a briefing with respect to the property located at 2121 West Garvey Avenue. There was direction provided, but no final action taken, and there is nothing to report. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Okay. City Manager, are there any changes to our agenda?
I have no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Michelle McNeil, our Community Services Director for it. She's going to do a presentation on Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you so much. This proclamation is really important to us. It helps underscore the fact that parks really does make our lives and our communities better. On behalf of the Community Services Department and our staff, we really just want to help our residents understand that Parks and Recreation really does enrich our lives. It increases the value of our homes and our neighborhoods and our communities, and thanks to our city council, it's because of you that we're able to help foster the development of our community and also provide opportunities for our youth during non-school hours. That really does have an impact in helping to reduce crime. So, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for all the hard work you and your department do. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our presentations for tonight. We'll move on to oral communications. This is the time for residents or anyone who'd like to speak on items within the purview of the city council. And our first speaker tonight is Armando Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. First, I want to talk about something that was on a non-agenda item. Last, I was here at the last meeting, and Roger Hernandez sent one of his staffers, and after he spoke, I'm not going to mention names, but one of the council members basically went on a rant with words about the way the state and the federal government. And I'm from the old school. I was in the military, two honorary discharges. I might not like my commanding officer, but if I had a problem, I'd talk to him in person. Or I might have a boss that I don't agree with, I pull him to the side, because I have done that. You know, and if we don't like our elected officials, you know, us as citizens, we make our vote count come November or June when there's an election, and that's how we talk. We talk with our polling place. So, that's the way I feel. That's the way my mom taught me to, you know. She didn't like certain presidents because some of them drafted her sons back in the day in '65 and '68, but you know what? She didn't disrespect whoever was the commanding officer or the commander in chief, and that's the way I've been taught. So, I just wanted to present that to you guys and just be aware, you know, because it was the will of the people where these, you guys are here, you know, where the state legislators are and where the federal people are, you know, it's under God, you know, the will of the people. And one of the things I wanted to talk to you on the agenda was Agenda Item Three. We're going to talk about West Covina, the golf course. I came to the meeting way back in, I think it was '04, '05, when that was being presented as a development, and I was here last month, and we have a shortfall in our budget. I remember Councilmember Wong saying, "Why are we going to mortgage something and then have the bank ask us to pay the next notes for that?" And that was financially sound advice. We're going to go in debt. We're trying to balance the budget here, statewide, federally. I mean, we've got a $14 trillion deficit in the United States government, and I know it's millions in here and then billions in the state. I don't think we should go for this. I think we should wait. You know, we're in probably seven years of hard times, and we should just wait this thing out. We should not jump, you know. Now, I'm a golfer. I love golf, but I can put that on hold. So, that's all I'd want to say to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff. I too want to speak about those two subjects, transparency and golf, and the golf course. And I meant, said that toward the end of the last council meeting, Mayor Hurford, Mayor Pro Tem, Tuohy spent considerable time suggesting that before the legislators in Sacramento started approving legislation for cities and county governments to be more transparent, they should look at their own lack of transparency in Sacramento. I agree with you 100 percent. Their presentation almost prompted me to stand up and yell my approval. The one thing that stopped me was remembering the many months the residents fought to retain televising the council meetings for the good of the residents that elected them to the council. There was an election coming up in a year, and it surely wouldn't have been good for the residents to see firsthand how the business of the city was being conducted at that time. By putting the approval for an agreement between the city of West Covina and West Covina Community Development Commission for the development of a golf course at the West Covina Sportsplex site, under the consent calendar, you again censor public input. Where is the transparency? Golf course. In July 2008, the city officials shelved plans to transform portions of the former BKK landfill into an 18-hole public course. As stated in the rationale at that time, the fiscal impact to build it would result in a negative cash flow to the city. This may apply to the city today. I request that you remove the item from the consent calendar tonight, which is a little late right now, until you reach agreements with the various bargaining units and when we, the residents, can be given an annual report on Big League Dreams at a future council meeting that shows that Big League Dreams is beginning to have a positive cash flow for the general fund. An argument that was given with regards to why the city should not continue televising the council meetings, I believe one of the council members said there was only approximately 37,000 cable users in West Covina. Using that same rationale, I don't think there are 37,000 golfing residents that would use the course at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. As you know, this is the first day of summer, and things are really busy at the library because the summer reading program started today. And as one of the people up there said, it's a busy buzzy place, and I think that that's really true. We've had some great programs. But the theme this year for the reading program, Summer Reading Program, and you'll hear it called the SRP, is One World and Many Stories. And as you'll see when you get the calendar, it's full of things for all ages, from babies up to seniors plus, whatever a senior plus might be. But anyway, every Saturday is Family Day, so there's programs for all the family and all ages. On Thursdays, it's at 4:00. It's for the teens. On Tuesday mornings, it's storytimes for the little guys, and Tuesday evening, it's storytime for the bigger ones. It's a pajama thing. The, well, that's really the main thing. Do come on out and see what's going on. And, of course, excuse me for looking at you and thinking of food, but you always say that. No, but you're always interested in what we're doing over there, and we're going to have a cooking program on Saturday, the 16th, and that's going to be Korean this time.
What day?
Yes, Saturday. Thank you, thank you. But anyway, there's a lot of great programs, and do come see what's happening at the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center.
Hello, good evening. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Stuart Mizukami. I'm the intern at the East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center. I first wanted to thank all the council members and the mayor for letting me have the opportunity to speak today. I just want to touch upon one of the events we're going to have. It is the Family Health Fair coming up on Saturday, July 23rd. This is the first time we are doing this, and it's a really great program. We have free health screenings for blood pressure, dental, hearing, et cetera. We have many workshops available that touches upon topics of obesity and nutrition, and we also have a resource fair with over 25 booths. And thank you for having a booth at our fair. We really appreciate it. And we also have a cooking demonstration focusing on the Japanese diet of soy and tofu and healthy alternatives. And this event, again, is free. And again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Just wanted to let you know of our event, and we have flyers outside the door on the table if any of you are interested. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, that concludes oral communications. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Any items that wish to be pulled?
I'd like to pull item number three.
Okay, item number three is pulled off. Do we have a motion on the rest of the items?
Some left.
Loop by Lane, second by Hurford. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. We'll go to item three. Do we have a staff report?
I guess I'm going to ask the redevelopment staff to come down here and address this, but while they're walking down here, let me briefly state that the state has, as you know, been adopting a number of recent bills, one of which is the elimination of redevelopment. And as we are looking at our current projects and what's going on, it has the potential to unravel many of the agreements that we already have in place, and it has the potential to block the further development of the BKK site, which is one of the reasons we had looked at this particular agreement. It doesn't mean that we have the monies now, but we are trying to at least preserve the ability of the city to develop that site or work with a developer to build that site in the future. Other legislation the state has looked at was to prohibit redevelopment beyond 20 acres of land. As the council's aware, we purchased well over 280 acres of land up there, so this could actually inhibit the ability to redevelop the balance of that site, so we're trying to at least set a path for us to give us some options for this community to redevelop that land, otherwise it will sit the way it is.
Yeah, Councilmember Tuohy?
And that's even if it wasn't a golf course. It stops you from doing any development on it of the balance of the 175 acres or 200 acres owned by the city that new legislation passed or potentially going into effect at the state level would prohibit any development up there at all.
That's correct, and on top of that, we have to already deal with the regulations from the federal government with the EPA and the Department of Toxic Substances from the state, so it's very limited uses that can be placed on that site because of the prior nature of that landfill. So, we're trying to at least preserve options for the city, and that's one of the reasons we are recommending this.
Mr. Kim. Mr. Lee. Oh, Ben, I'm sorry. Mr. Kim.
This item, to piggyback on City Manager Passmann, this item is before the council to place an agreement type between the CDC and the city to preserve the ability to build a development on the golf course site, on the site.
But it doesn't commit the city to building a golf course.
It doesn't lie.
Making sure there's a difference between the two.
It's only when the funds are available that we're going to set that aside in hopes of, at some point in time, that we can do this.
Yes. Or something.
Yes. Okay.
Any other questions?
I might add that the valuation is an up-to-date number, but it's a number that was used, what, four years ago, I believe it was, five years ago? And that's where the $45 million came from. It is not money that is available in the agency. It's trying to project out what the future tax increment might be generated. To the extent we're able to build a golf course out there in the future that will generate potentially additional revenues for the city's general fund, it potentially generates a few jobs out there as well and, you know, redoes the BKK landfill so that we at least have a more productive use on that property. So, again, it gives us those options.
Councilwoman.
Is there any way, just listening to what the last resident had said, is that pull a report and show the residents how great Big League Dreams is doing? I know talking to Director McNeil, Big League Dreams is actually just making money, and is that something just so we do have that transparency?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great to have that report. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Councilwoman Sanderson.
Yeah, no questions. Just a brief comment in reference to just what's being said at this point is we have freedoms in this country, and it's a great country for that reason. And I just wanted to make everybody aware how, as council, that's our job is to be up here and to take our freedoms and make statements, and we have not only the right, but the duty and the obligation to do so for the people that we represent. And this is just one of them, and this is one small move to protect our city. Our Director McNeil was up here earlier. We have a great community services. We have great parks. That's what makes this city so fabulous. The state has made some bad choices that are affecting us, impacting us greatly. That's why we are here to guide this city, protect this city, and do the things that we need to do, and that's why this is on tonight's agenda. And I thank staff for being on top of this. It's going to be a great project in the future for us, and I think it's clear to everybody here that no money is being spent. I think we're, I disagree with the previous speaker that says we don't have transparency. I respectfully disagree with that. We are here every Tuesday, second, first, and third Tuesday for the public to speak to us. Our phone number, we're available. We want to be here for you. We want to be transparent. We want to do a good job by you. Saying that, I would like to make a motion that we move forward on this and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, have a developer, somebody that's interested in working with us on that. And again, I do respectfully, again, disagree that we do have the right to express our concerns that the state is making some huge mistakes and that we do have the right to make the people aware of that. So, and thanks for everybody for being involved.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Tuohy. Mr. Tuohy.
First of all, to answer some of the questions about the state and stuff, we have addressed Assemblyman Hernandez in a letter to him about our position, since that was brought up, I think by Armando. We did state that directly to him and our objections to the state legislature. Contrary to the issue on transparency, we're never allowed, as a public, to address the legislature as a whole. All you're ever allowed to do is meet with approximately seven, nine, or 11, whatever their committee is. You never get to address the entire 80 of them before they vote. So, it's, you, some people may consider that transparency at this level, and I know the item was on the consent calendar. Obviously, the item was pulled off as we can do. Even if it wasn't on the consent calendar, you still had a right to speak on it, and that's what oral communications was about. That's part of what the issue is. We are deeply concerned about the state legislature and how they're going about doing it. That had the potential, and I'm talking about BKK, to be a superfund site. I don't think people fully understand how superfund sites operate, but right now, it's only the first level of potential responsible parties that are liable. If that ever went all the way and we didn't engage, we did a lot of things contrary, you know, a lot of people may not notice. We had to loan BKK some money. They put up property that we had a foreclose on, but they put up money, so we made the balance of their insurance payments, so it preserved $50 million in insurance coverage that was going to lapse if we didn't take our action. So, we loaned, I think, 1.8 million to preserve 50 million in insurance, and we got property in Nevada and up in Northern California to cover our potential loss, but the key thing was the potential loss for the community of $50 million. We, being a host city, are somewhat liable, and if you understand how trash works, you're liable for the trash you dump wherever you dump it for in perpetuity. You owe your pro-rata share for however many tons you dump in any landfill anywhere in the United States. So, the liability for cities around here could have been hundreds of millions of dollars over liability at BKK had we not taken some of the actions we have done and we have preserved and contained a lot of the bad stuff that has happened there. If you remember in the older days, a lot of that area, and Steve and I fought hard on many years, and really, Steve, before I even got here in the early '90s, because a lot of homes over there were redlined and we're not allowed to get insurance. We had a lot of issues with what was being done over there, and we fought. The Lynn Streets, the L Streets over there were evacuated because you could poke a hole in the ground and have methane gas come up. The homes were evacuated for up to six months, some of those things on Lynn Court and some of the other homes over there. So, we've been through a lot. Some of these things we're looking at doing, redevelopment was a tool to help protect our general fund base. When they talk about how issues are paid there, and they always bring up Big League Dreams, the bonds are paid through property tax increment. So, whereas the property has increased in value, that generates the money to pay it. That does never go to the general fund anyway. It goes to the redevelopment agency. The money Big League Dreams pays the city doesn't go to the redevelopment agency. It goes to the general fund. So, it's an exact opposite. That's how almost all of our deals we do in the city, anytime we've ever done redevelopment, you use your property tax increment generated off the new development to pay for the assistance you're giving, and hopefully that project you're doing, like the mall or the auto dealers, generates sales tax in lieu of, and we eventually get paid back through the property tax increment. So, it's just different to me, preserving that tool that they're trying to take from us. The city has paid approximately $35 million in ransom to the state since 1994. They've taken out of our general fund. We just made an $8 million payment over the last two years of money they took from us. And I understand it's, we can say it to be nice to them, that's your money. That's the taxpayers' dollars that are going to fund the debt of the state, and they're not doing the things they have to do. So, we do get very protective. We're trying to protect our agency. We're trying to protect property the agency owns. Under the new legislation, if there are not agreements on property, the state has the right to seize all property owned by the redevelopment agency as well as your balances. So, we're trying to protect, as almost every city has in the state of California, all 488, they've gone on protecting their property. Most people have transferred the property to the city or entered into agreements to protect it from asset seizures at the state of California as well as the money. If you see in the article we got from Councilmember or Assemblyman Hernandez, when we were upstairs, we can continue if we pay a ransom of 5.9 million to start off with next year and continue giving them 1.5 million more, and not Roger personally, I want to make sure, to the state of California, but we can continue doing that if we do that. And to me, that's your money, and they should deal with their problems. We're trying to deal with ours, but they shouldn't balance their budgets on top of our backs. We have plenty of our own problems, and the residents do get an option to address us here. We don't get to address, like I said, the 80 members of the state legislature or the assembly or the 40 in the senate. We don't have that opportunity. It's very unfortunate, and they have the right to meet in private, like I said, come to conclusions on how they're going to vote, and then come out in the state legislature in open session and then vote. That's legal at the state of California, and part of our thing, we're arguing about transparency, is we can't meet three people and reach a decision prior to the council meeting, but they can reach a decision prior to the open vote and tell everyone, and they actually have a sheet of paper, if you've ever been up there, both Democrats and Republicans pass out a sheet of paper of how they expect their members to vote. It's already printed what you're expected to do. I don't know if we call that open government now, but that's the gist of what we are saying. But I fully support doing this and trying to protect our city and the assets a city has purchased as best as possible.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. We'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing is the Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. This matter is set for public hearing for the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Thank you. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District. First will be a presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear comments from the public. City Manager, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Yancey will do the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The Citywide Lighting and Maintenance District funds the operation and maintenance of street trees and street lighting throughout the city. The Citywide District was approved by the voters in a mail ballot election in 1997. It also included an automatic Consumer Price Index increase, but not to exceed 2 percent. This increase would represent less than eight cents per month increase for a typical single-family home. Staff is recommending this increase this year of 2 percent. If no increase is taken, the reserves would be depleted in 2016, and even currently, the reserves are not enough to cover the cash flow for the district. Again, staff recommends approval of the CPI increase of 2 percent as approved by the voters, and with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Yancey. Councilwoman Lane.
Just real quick, the 2 percent increase, is that 92 cents?
Yes, that's approximately 92 cents.
So, that's what the increase is?
Yes.
A year. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will now move to the public, or let me ask City Clerk, have you received any written notifications?
None have been received.
Okay, thank you. Move to the public portion of the public comment portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the city council? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
Do you approve?
Motion approved by Lane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sanderson. This is a resolution. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye. Actually, excuse me, let's have a roll call, okay?
Hold on, ordinance.
Hold on, ordinance? Okay, so we're okay on that. Okay, let's do that vote again. All those in favor of the resolution, is there a number on it?
2011-38.
2011-38, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next public hearing is, this matter is set for public hearing, consists of an amendment to Chapter 26 of the West Covina Municipal Code related to vehicle storage in service commercial zones. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
This time, I'll show up in the public hearing on code amendment number 11-3. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, and then those opposed. Mr. Passmann, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will do that report.
Thank you. This is a code amendment for vehicle storage. On March 8th, 2011, the planning staff received a letter from Penske and Mercedes-Benz of West Covina requesting that the city allow vehicle storage lots on Hollenbeck Street. Penske owns two parking lots located on the west side of Hollenbeck, one on the north side of the freeway, and the other on the south side of the freeway. These parking lots were constructed in 2001 at the request of Penske at the time to allow employee parking. Currently, the municipal code allows for vehicle storage in the manufacturing zone. Vehicle storage is not allowed in any commercial or residential zones. The Penske employee parking lots are located in what's called the service commercial zone or otherwise referred to as the SC zone. Other properties located in the SC zone include the West Covina Village Shopping Center on Azusa Avenue, the Heights Shopping Center on Central Azusa, and the bowling alley on Glendora Avenue, as well as other properties which are listed in your staff report on page one. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the code amendment on May 24, 2011. The commission expressed support for the code amendment but wanted to narrowly define to limit the amount of commercial land that could be used for vehicle storage. land that could be used for vehicle storage. The Planning Commission recommended a code amendment with, a code amendment with the following standards. One, to allow the storage of new vehicles when in conjunction with an automobile dealership. This would only allow new, new vehicle dealerships to request to store vehicles, uh, but would allow dealership to request storage on property they do not own. Secondly, to allow the storage with the approval of an administrative use permit. The administrative use permit does not require a public hearing before the Planning Commission or city council. It is generally reviewed administratively unless a public hearing is requested by a member of the public. However, it does require notification and allows for placement of conditions of approval. Lastly, this code amendment would allow storage of vehicles in the SC zone. Planning Commission recommended approval of the code amendment on a five zero vote. We're recommending approval tonight. Happy to answer any questions. We do also have a representative from Penske here tonight as well.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone, okay, we'll move to the public comment portion of the public hearing. Is anyone here wishing to speak in favor? I have no cards. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I'll close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Counsel discussion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Tuie.
Second.
Second by Armbrust. Uh, this is a motion in order to introduce and adopt code amendment number eleven dash three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Okay. Next items of public hearing regarding the Auto Plaza's Business Improvement District, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve annual report and assessment. This is a time set for a public hearing for the city council to consider the approval of a resolution that confirms the annual report for the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District area for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve. Notice that this hearing has been published as required by California state law. Madam City Clerk, do you have the affidavit of publication?
Affidavit is on file.
Thank you. I just, I now declare the public hearing open. All persons who desire to be heard will have an opportunity to speak during the public testimony portion of this hearing. When you for, come forward to the podium, please give your name and organization, if any, which you are representing at this hearing. First, we will have the staff presentation. Mr. Pazman, who will present the staff report?
Uh, Mr. Kim will do that report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The item before the city council consideration is a resolution conforming the annual report filed by the Advisory Board for the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District. The adoption of the resolution places direct assessment on the auto dealers in which the assessment revenue is for various operation and maintenance costs of the electronic reader board as well as the, um, the operational and maintain, maintenance costs for the entry statement to the Auto Plaza located at Azusa and Gary, Garvey, excuse me. On April eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District Advisory Board held this annual meeting and approved the annual report and the budget. The report was, report has been filed with the city clerk as required by the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of nineteen eighty-nine. And the report describes the assessment budget of forty-eight thousand ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents, which will be divided among six auto dealers, resulting in an assessment of eight thousand fifteen dollars and forty-four cents for each dealership for the fiscal year two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. On June seventh, the city council adopted the resolution of intention to levy the assessment and set forth the, the date for this public hearing. The notice of public hearing has been sent to the six business, six business improvement district property owners. And as of this date, there have been no objections. And that concludes the staff's presentation.
Counselor number two, you have a question?
What happens in the case, because I know, uh, one of the auto dealers is not paying their assessment. What happens when, um, they no longer have surplus in their account and that particular auto dealer still, um, is not paying his, uh, bill? How does, who makes up the shortfall?
Well, the, uh, the, the shortfall has been, um, has been paid with the, um, the reserve. There's a six-month reserve that's built into the, into the, uh, annual budget every year. And, um, it's not anticipated that even if the two dealerships do not pay the assessment, that there will be a disruption to the operation.
Will the other four auto dealers or properties get their money back that they have loaned the auto dealer that owns two properties there?
I believe so. Eventually, the direct, the way that the direct assessment works according to the tax collector is that at what, at a period when the, um, the taxes are collected or the defaults are collected, they will dis, disperse the collected tax accordingly.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, or, and additionally, there would be the assessment imposed and lien placed upon the property owner's property so that there's always that security against the property.
Since the property taxes aren't being paid also, um, can that be, can the Business Improvement District, can that money be wiped out in, uh, bankruptcy? Or are all of them secured since it's a property tax by the government?
I believe those are all secured by property interests. So while the, certainly there could be a claim against the, the, um, the assessment in bankruptcy court, uh, that would be for the bankruptcy judge to try and work through those issues. But, uh, once they are leaned against the property, yeah, those are going to have higher priority than non-secured liens.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any written communications, City Clerk?
No written communication was received.
Okay, now we'll open the public testimony portion of the public hearing and receive testimony from the public regarding the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District, District. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in favor or opposition? Okay, seeing none, I will now close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Ask for counsel.
Motion.
Member discussion. Motion by Tuie, second by Lane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have adopted the, uh, Business Improvement District area fiscal budget for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. That was a five oh vote. That concludes this matter. Next matter is set for public hearing, consists of adopting a resolution the city council setting and increasing certain fees and charges. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Thank you. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on this matter. There will first be the presentation of the staff report. Then we shall hear from comments from the public. Mr. Pazman, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Swink will do that report.
Good evening, Mayor Herbert and members of the council. The item before you this evening is the annual review of citywide fees, charges, and fines, which is done each year as part of our budget process. During our review, staff seeks to recover what it costs us to provide various services as allowed by the California Constitution and our own municipal code. There are only about fourteen adjustments this year. They're summarized in the table in the staff report, and I'll briefly give you a quick overview of those. Uh, probably the most significant one are some increases in parking fines. And these are as a result of county courts taking away a portion of our parking fine revenue. Uh, they did that under state legislation. It authorizes them to do that. But this legislation doesn't automatically increase the fine so that we continue to receive the same amount. So we are asking for an increase across the board to do that. Our parking fines currently range from a low of fifty dollars to a high of three hundred and fifty dollars. If these changes are adopted as proposed, they'll range from a low of fifty-five dollars to a high of four hundred dollars. The average citation is approximately fifty-five dollars. That's the most frequent citation that we write. That's a bulk of them, and it would go up to sixty dollars per citation. Uh, one point to keep in mind, contrary to public, um, popular opinion, uh, traffic citation revenue is not general fund. It goes in the traffic safety fund and can only be used for traffic safety purposes. There are also a handful of new or adjusted fees for planning and other activities, including filming. And we have a couple of items that are actually going to result in slight reductions. Those include, um, asking staff, allowing staff to have a program, promotional discount program, which would enable community services staff to allow a temporary discount on programs or services in order to market, um, underutilized programs or facilities. The idea being to give residents and other members of the public the opportunity to see what great services we provide with the hopes that then they'll continue to participate in those, um, activities and ultimately result in, uh, in growth in our revenues. Um, there's also going to be, as proposed, is a change in our senior citizen dog license discount program to conform with what's done with other cities countywide. Currently, we have an age requirement and an income requirement. That requires city staff time, to take time to review and verify the income requirement. It's quite inconvenient also for qualified participants because they have to fill out the paperwork and go through a, a, somewhat of a prob, prob, a little bit of a problematic process. This will streamline things and it will allow more senior citizens to realize that twelve-dollar discount. Um, lastly, there was a fee that was set for one of the rental of one of our facilities where the half-day rental was actually higher than, um, half of a full-day rental. So we're simply rectifying that, reducing that down by twenty dollars. That concludes my report. If there's any other questions on any of these other items, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, questions? Councilwoman Lane.
Yeah, I have a question on, um, on the discount for the senior citizen for the dog license.
Yes.
It says it's twelve dollars, correct?
Right. It's normally twenty-two dollars for a dog license, and they would be able to get it for ten dollars. Only one dog per household, and they'd have to be age sixty or older.
Okay. So, because it says the proposed change simply offers one twelve-dollar discount for household. So would it be?
That's correct. Uh, so you go, instead of having to pay twenty-two dollars for your dog license, for one dog in your household, if you're age sixty or older, you'd only have to pay ten dollars, which would be a twelve-dollar discount.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Tuie?
I think she was checking if her husband, Rick qualifies for the discount.
That's just mean. He's so mean.
Um, the filming stuff, have we checked with LA Film, um, the, the city and LA County based film commission? Are our fees still in standards with, um, filming in other areas? Because we haven't been doing as much filming as we used to in the city.
Uh, these, these fees were, um, come up with, were calculated by the actual individual departments. So I don't know if they actually checked with those or not. My understanding is we haven't actually had, um, an occasion for the evening and long-term ones. Pardon me, sir? Ah, I'll allow Michelle McNeil to address that. She has an idea on that.
The Community Services reviewed all the fees that the city of LA does, since they're so well-versed in assessing, uh, permit fees and fines, um, and rental costs. From community services perspective, I can't speak for the planning department. The planning department has a thousand-dollar fee. That's before you this evening. As far as we're concerned, um, we're trying to capture, um, any filming usage that would occur that doesn't trigger the planning department's fee, because there's filming that takes place in city parks that doesn't have a fee right now. Because if it doesn't trigger a major production, then they're able to film without a fee. So right now, we're proposing three hundred dollars a day. We researched LA's and clearly LA has, oh my gosh, probably a structure that's about twenty separate fees, everything from a catering truck to a cleanup crew to, so we didn't go to that extreme. We started with a base fee. They charge three fifty where, per day for that park usage, we're recommending three hundred.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just real quick.
Councilwoman Lane.
How often do we have filming in West Covina? Is this something that occurs?
Yeah, um, last year we had, that I'm aware of, um, we had three different, um, groups that came to us and wanted to film in West Covina for events that didn't trigger the planning department's permitting fee.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I do, I have one more if I could.
Councilwoman Lane.
Oh, not, not you, Michelle, I'm sorry. Sorry. Uh, just the staff, um, on the voluntary ambulance fee, I was just curious, how, how is that doing? Is that doing well or are people taking advantage of it?
Are you talking about the ambulance subscription fee?
Yes.
Yes, we have a little over three hundred people, um, taking advantage of the ambulance subscription fee currently.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our questions. Shall now open the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Lloyd?
Good evening, Mayor. I just have a question about for the dog license. Uh, they said it was ten dollars for one dog if it's sixty or older. So if you have three dogs, do you pay the regular price for the other two dogs? Is that what it is? I just want to make sure that's right. Okay, that's.
Okay.
No problem, thank you.
All right. Okay, that concludes public comment portion of the public hearing. I'll close public testimony and counsel discussion. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Moved by Armbrust, second by Lane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five oh. Okay, now we move on to Community Services Department, Identification of New Projects Funded by the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds. City staff, do we have a brief report on this?
Yeah, Michelle will do that. Excuse me, Michelle will do that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, as of March two thousand and eleven, the city of West Covina has an unobligated balance of community development block grant funds of approximately seven hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, because the housing and urban development requires that the city, um, spend these funds in a timely manner, staff is recommending that the city council identify some new projects so that we can obligate and expend those funds. To qualify for CDBG funding, uh, projects do have to predominantly serve low and moderate income individuals in the community. And, um, the areas within our city that meet that qualification can be found on the maps in your staff report. The, the projects that staff is identifying at this point for the city council's consideration, um, there are seven listed in the report. There are three additional ones we'd like to add to the table this evening. I'll briefly run through those. The first one is a multi-function playground at Palm View Park. The next is a hybrid playground splash pad at Palm View Park. Uh, the expansion of two tennis courts at Del Nordi Park, a splash pad at Palm View Park, the renovation of Palm View Park Community Center's amphitheater on the outside that would include a shade structure and some outdoor seating, potentially explore the purchase of the land next to Del Nordi Park, which is owned and operated by West Covina Unified School District, to see if they're open to a sale of that land, a walking path around Palm View Park. And then the three that we'd like to add to the staff report this evening would be the consideration of a dog park at Palm View Park, volleyball, sand volleyball courts at Palm View Park or Del Nordi Park, and solar panels, which would qualify potentially for CDBG funding at the senior center, um, at the Palm View Community Center, and potentially the fire station. Uh, the, uh, housing and urban development really does have a strong component to gather community feedback for CDBG-funded projects. So because of that, staff will recommend that we would like to, um, suggest that the council consider some community input meetings for residents around Palm View Park and , uh, Del Nordi Park if the council wants to proceed with projects in those areas. There is no fiscal impact from this report. However, if you wanted us to pursue any of the projects and you've just, you know, determined which projects are desirable to the council, we can bring that back in the form of a different staff report that gives you some cost for construction and long-term maintenance. That concludes my report.
Great. Uh, any comments from council? I think it's a good list. Um, I suppose if we had other ideas later, we could, uh, bring them to community meetings. I think it's good to go out to the community and see what they're interested in. So with that, do we have a motion to approve this item?
Yes, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like to make sure, uh, um, let me go back over my notes real fast. I want to make sure we're looking at a splash pad at both, the only two parks, by the way, because this will come up later on, um, contrary to whatever, but it's in the staff report. Palm View and Del Nordi are the two areas that have the lowest income in our community. You'll hear other things say about other parks, but that's this, that's the law. It's written by the federal government, not us. We don't make up the things, but that is exactly where their census numbers have taken it. I want to, want to make sure we're looking at dog parks at both those facilities, um, and, and the splash pads at both those facilities. And I have no problem with different things on the list. Um, I know we also have, uh, um, potential, uh, more money in, uh, to, uh, to do more of this, um, on future allocations of the community development block grant money. And I, I just want to make sure, again, this money is, if you don't use it, they will keep it and take it back from you. Um, I think they already cut our allocation this year. So if, again, as we don't spend it, the, the federal government is taking the money back from the city of West Covina, or has potential to not give as much, why other cities are expending all their community development block grant money on projects. So, um, I would fully support this to make sure our taxpayers get all the money that was given back to them.
And I'll go ahead and second it, but I had a question of staff, if I could.
Sure.
What's the difference between the two concepts in the splash pads, one and two?
One is a hybrid that would have a playground structure adjacent to Airplane Park at Palm View.
No, I'm actually looking at the design.
Oh. Is that attachment number?
Yeah, four and five.
Four and five? I'm actually going to call in Del Morgan for it, because she was able to work with the vendors to procure, procure these projects right here.
Well, she's coming up, Counselmember Tuie had a question too.
I phoned the mayor and yesterday of Baldwin Park, who just did this, and also, I don't know if we're aware of, but the Upper San Gabriel Municipal Water District will also give rebate program to recycle the water. They will pay for a portion of these to be built. They have grant money out there to take care of it, and they did it at the Morgan Park facility in the city of Baldwin Park.
Okay, Ms. Morgan.
If I might add also, before she starts, there may also be some Edison rebates on this as well.
I doubt that, but go ahead.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. I'm assuming you're talking about the difference between, it's just a matter of the features that are there, that are provided. Both of these were priced out at a 20 by 20.
Okay.
So, it's a 20-foot by 20-foot area.
So, one actually doesn't really have any play features, just water sports out, and the other has play features?
Yes, and there's an assortment, there's a plethora of things that one can do, so it just depends on the, what, you know, what kind, how many play features you want. Also, the, the volume of water, the practice that you use as far as taking the water from the splash pad, either to sewer or recirculating or irrigating the park, all those are, that's where the bulk of the money is, actually, all of the features of the operations.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Counselwoman Armbrust.
I just want to say thank you to staff, and I think it's great. I love it. Thank you so much for including the dog park, and I would like to see also two, the two dog parks at both parks, if we could do that. I know a lot of residents, again, would like to see dog parks, and I would too, so thank you so much to staff, this looks great.
Director Michelle McNeil.
Just one comment of clarification, just to be clear, but anything that the City Council would like to consider obviously has to go through a review process with CDBG, so we did look to determine whether or not other CDBG projects had some money going toward it for dog parks, and we were able to find some, some projects, a few, so anyway, just want to make sure we're all aware that certainly it still has to go through a review process, which isn't determined by this body, but certainly determined by HUD and the federal.
Of course, thanks.
Counselmember Tuie.
Are any of those locations eligible, because it's based on the lack of park space for Prop 84 funding from the state of California? I know it's based on how much park or open spaces in certain areas, so...
Prop 84, the grant that we are applying for, for soccer, has that requirement to it. It's based on a parkland deficit and, or, and/or an income, a low income level. CDBG is really based on whether or not you're meeting the needs of low and, low to moderate-income families.
Thank you. Okay. And we have a motion, I believe by Tuie, second by Lane, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. This will come back to community meetings, so. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to council member commissioner reports. Any, any reports anybody would like to give? I think I'll report a couple of things. Since our last council meeting, we've had the Marriott Hotel open up on Restaurant Row, if you haven't been over there yet. We had the grand opening ceremony, very well attended. It's a beautiful hotel, going to have some really, really nice public art there, and the occupancy is about 50 percent and growing, so we're happy to add that to our businesses in the city. And then I had the privilege of attending a graduation ceremony for some eighth-grade students at South Hills Academy, which is a private school in the city, and it was really a neat experience to see the respect and the dignity that these kids had, and I was kind of struck by it, and I think the comments that were made about respect up here, I would disagree in one context, and it's, it's not that we're not respectful, but there are issues that are very, very difficult issues. And when we are faced with a budget where, fortunately, we didn't have to lay anybody off this year, but where employees are taking pay raise cuts, where we're reducing 20 positions because they're vacant, those are really, really tough issues, and as a legislator, you know, you, you look at not only the employee, but the family, the economic impact to everybody that it trickles down to, and it's always, you know, we haven't gotten to the point where we've had to lay anybody off, thank God, and it's going to come, but we have great employees here, we have approximately 400 employees, and some of the actions of the state are causing us to get to that point sooner, and so that's, it's not disrespect, but you have to discuss the issue, and when you discuss the issue, the people that vote for those issues, you have to explain that they're the ones who voted for it, because those are the ones that are causing the city to have the grief, so. Anyway, I attended that graduation, and it kind of made me think about the role that we have here as leaders, and I do think we're very respectful of everybody, I think our decorum up here is appropriate, but we do discuss issues, and we do discuss them with some emotion. Okay, Counselmember Tuie.
And I'm probably the more emotional one on this, but a lot of the things do happen. Last year, they were trying to take any, all of our hotel occupancy tax, which is close to a million dollars a year. If you book your hotel online, the state's going to keep the money. Well, most of the hotels these days are booked online, so it's another raid, and that's why, yeah, we do get personal, it's a million dollars that we have to cut, and my point was with Joaquin, who is the field representative for Assemblyman Hernandez, is their offices aren't facing cuts, yet all of our workers are. And to me, it's a real thing for the residents of West Covina that don't impact state workers or employees the exact same, and that was the gist of the point, every little thing. They're changing what interest rate we can charge, the city can charge a redevelopment agency for the money it has loaned, well, that's only a $1.8 million hit to the general fund. If they take the redevelopment agency, it's only a $2.5 million hit to the general fund, much less the 15 employees that get laid off. So, they do all have hits, because that's, you know, 8% of our budget would be gone tomorrow, and I think everything this bothers you, because every time we turn around, we're trying to get projects to bring, you know, bring projects to bring stuff here, someone's taken $100,000 hit here, a $50,000 hit here from us, and it all adds up. I know Steve mentioned the, you know, Fairfield Inn, H&amp;M opened this last weekend, it's a new retailer next to their Forever 21 store. It opened up, we had Chronic Taco open up next door to Chronic Taco. In the next week and a half, we have Lee's Sandwiches opening up on one side, and I think Five Guys Hamburgers is opening up in two weeks, but I mean, the amount of new retail space coming here, Pacific Grill, Fish Grill will be done next to Habit, Pet Smart, and there's some other stores we're not allowed to disclose of yet, the entire Best Buy Center has been re-leased, it's Babies R Us, Toys R Us, Michael's, we can't officially announce it, but they have signs up on the building saying they're coming, but we can't release their names in a press release, but I think there's a lot of great things going on right now, but they take years to get online to get the sales tax from them, and it's until, like we said in the paper, until people are back working, it's going to be hard for us to recover, because we live off of sales, people buying new cars and people shopping.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a couple adjournments tonight. First off, longtime member of our city, Mr. Mike Carrigan passed away on June 14th, while in his home in West Covina, he was born in Willwaka, Oklahoma, on June 6, 1948. He is survived by his wife Valerie of 42 years, daughter Jennifer and Amanda, granddaughter Marie Young, and brother David Carrigan. Mike's lifespan from serving in the Navy during the Vietnam War to obtaining his master's degree in education at Cal State LA. He later became a community services coordinator for the Los Angeles School District, then eventually working for the Los Angeles County Probation Department. He also served on the West Covina Unified School Board and remained active till his untimely death. Mike will be remembered for his sense of humor, his intelligence, his good looks, and his dedication to his family and friends. Viewing was June 18th, and the service was this past Monday. The one thing that Mike and I remember when we first, I think Mike was running for office, we were at the VFW one night, and Mike had the, he had the skill to partake of libations, I guess is what you say, and anyway, he was, he had a few, and...
Mike Carrigan.
Mike Carrigan.
I don't like the way that came out.
Yeah, Mike Tuie didn't drink, doesn't drink, but he, he went up to Mike Tuie in the hallway and gave him a headbutt, about knocked him out, and we didn't know why, we didn't, you know, Mike was new to politics, it was a symbol, I guess he liked him, so...
He said I didn't have his vote.
But it was, it was something that we always remembered, so Mike will be missed. Also, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Marceline Stutt, who is the grandmother of our Community Services Commissioner, Nick Lewis, and Nick's here tonight, sorry to hear about your grandmother. And also, our commissioner, one of our commissioners, Sandra Taylor, her mom Shirley Holmes passed away, so we give our condolences to her family, and we will adjourn tonight in the memory of those three individuals. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in memory of those. Moved in second, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.